Time is six o'clock. I call the meeting up to Toca City Council at order. Ask everyone to rise. As we do the pledge of allegiance and the invitation. Place the flag, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you this evening for just, uh, thank you for the many, many blessings you bestow upon us in this community, Lord. Lord, just be with us tonight as we conduct the city's business. Lead and guide us. Give us the knowledge to do the very best we can to represent this city and to move it forward into the future, Father. Be with everyone that's here tonight. Give them safe trip home. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Good evening to everyone. Thank you for joining us. Everyone. Everyone. At this time, will clerk call roll, please?
Ms. McGee, here. Ms. Pogue, Mr. Cheryl.
Here.
Mr. Kathy.
Here.
Back here, we're gonna start this early today.
I sit here.
You're a president.
I just didn't say it real loud. All right, this is public comment time. If anything, it's not, it's the heat. Diane's getting, it's hot out there.
I know.
Uh, this is public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the council at this time. In hearing none, we will move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting on August 4th, 2025.
I recommend approving.
A second. Have a motion as second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the city manager's report. Mr. DeLa, good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My reports on attachment number two, if anyone has any questions.
No one has any questions? Did you wanna look at it?
No, I looked at my emails.
Okay, I recommend approving.
Okay, have a motion.
I'll second.
Have a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the payment purchase orders for the city of Atoka for the month of July, 2025.
Those are on attachment number three, and I'll review all those today.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion as second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number four, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the adoption of resolution number 2025-15, casting a vote for the trustee of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, or otherwise known as OKMRF, to fill the expiring term of District Two representing the entire membership. This is attachment four. Mr. DeLa, we'll throw this one to you.
This gentleman here, I've, I've met him a few years ago. In fact, he welcomed me when I first joined the City Manager Association. And he had asked me for our support as he was running for this board position. And I told him that I would ask for y'all's recommendation for, for him to be on that board. He is the town administrator, Carleton's Landing up at Yufalla.
That's what I was gonna ask where you from. In this district too, that's where, where all, how many is in that district?
I'm not, I'm not sure, yeah.
Okay.
It'd be a large district, as far as I'm aware.
Do you have any information on Mr. Buckley that?
I just, I've, I've met him and visited with him several times at different conferences and everything. He seems like a good solid person.
Where's he from?
Uh, Carleton's Landing. It's up at Yufalla.
Okay.
It's, uh, they incorporated it, I'm not sure, not too many years ago.
Oh, it's been probably eighteen, twenty, fifteen.
Yeah. Uh, I think he had told me, he, and he had one or two employees, and then they just tire everything else out. So he's, he's got a little different kind of operation there.
Okay.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
If no one has any questions, okay?
Have a motion as second. Roll call, please.
Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number five, discussion and/or action regarding adopting or rejecting ordinance number 616, amending, amending the employee retirement system defined contribution plan for the city manager for the city of Atoka. And this is similar to what we did on the last time we had a review, Johnny, on the city.
Correct. Yeah, we do this about every year.
So where you can change, change your, uh, your, uh, bounds that you wanna put into it each year.
Very good.
And this is for all employees?
City manager.
Well, I've only wanted some of them members.
Oh, okay, okay. I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion as second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number six, discussion and/or action on establishing and constructing certain bus stops within the city of Atoka. This is attachment six on our packet. And I'm gonna, Ms. Pogue, I'm gonna say this one's probably yours.
Yes, okay, so we have, uh, it says on here Starbucks, but it's actually the cookie place, the new cookie place that's over there.
American cookie?
Uh-huh, those people are agreeable to let us put one there. Um, Walmart has said yes, Alliance Health has said yes, Inca, of course. And then, we're not really using Riva's place, that's just a marker there, it's the...
What's the bench and stuffs are there?
Yeah, the bench is already there. Cause I talked to Danny, and he said we could put, we could put something in the flower bed, just a sign in the flower bed that would work.
Okay.
And so...
Is there a bench?
Like bus stops here or something like that, or? Yes.
I don't know if there's a bench there, though.
Yeah, there is.
Is there?
It's, and the streets, the way that we've got the streets set up, they make it AD accessible.
Okay, good.
But it's got the little concrete bench thing kinda wraps around in front of that flower pot.
Okay, okay, I got you. I was just, I was thinking of freestanding, I couldn't think of that one.
Yeah, I was too, I was thinking of another.
What'd you say they were going at again, um?
So, it's right here, Diane, on that sheet.
On this map.
The, next to last page is where she's got the location.
So that's the first route. There'll be a morning route and a night route. So the morning route, those are the stops.
You saying daytime route or morning?
Daytime.
Okay, okay.
There, I, it's really the morning.
Yeah, I didn't realize.
But it's daytime, there's a daytime and a nighttime route.
Okay.
And so then the nighttime route will run from the cookie place, Walmart, Alliance, Inca, and, uh, the Fifth Street stop, oops, they left the Fifth Street stop off this one. There'll be a stop on Fifth Street. Uh, do you remember where Tamara Cheryl had, or Tamara Edwards had her house torn down not too long ago? She's gonna let me put a stop there.
So in California in First?
I think so. That's where that big two-story was. So that'll be one more. And then the same thing on this one, the extra stop in here is the Chalk Talk Travel Plaza. And I haven't actually got anybody to say yes, but the nighttime route can run a little bit different, so we might not have a sign and bench there, but we can still stop there.
Okay.
Do we have to do the pub, public meetings or anything for these?
Okay, so we've already been doing them, but no, our ordinance just says the council has to approve designating bus stops. It is very, the ordinance is vague.
Well, I think, once we look at the...
Oh, it wouldn't be vague, Erica.
I love it, my babe.
I'm sorry, I didn't read it all the way.
She read what she wanted, her.
Yeah, I probably did read what I wanted to read.
Stop when you got, when you got the answer, then. So...
You know, if we were spending a lot of our own money on permanent bus stops?
Yeah.
You probably would, but since this is a grant program and may not be permanent in nature, so.
It's a one-year project that won't start till the summer of 2026. Um, nothing is permanent, we're not gonna, the only thing that might be is, we might pour, oh, down at Pruitt's. I don't think they gave you the right thing. Pruitt's is a stop on here, too.
Yeah, it doesn't have Pruitt's.
Mm-hmm.
Well, not on the downtown.
Yeah, Pruitt's should be on the nighttime.
Well, hey, on the second, they had Starbucks listed twice, at the top and the bottom.
That must be the Pruitt's. The Pruitt's one is on, yeah, it's missing there. So Pruitt's is the only place where I think we're gonna have to pour concrete, cause they're gonna allow us to make an AD accessible route, uh, entrance down there at that end.
North end of the building?
Huh?
North end or south end?
The north end.
If you're looking at the front doors, left or right?
This way, right.
South end.
South end, yeah.
Texas is for freestanding.
I'm standing out here in the street, bro, and I'm standing in the street.
Dallas, Tulsa.
Yep.
Yeah.
So down there at the south end, you know where they used to have the old pharmacy? So what we wanna do is try to modify that area and put a ramp there and a bench down there, so that way we can also have all their customers that ride our bus anytime of day stand down there. Because right now, we're pulling up in the front of their door. And if they've got a bunch of groceries, it takes forever to get on the bus, and so we're kinda in their way.
And this is gonna be, will this be, Inca can use this and, and the other cert, and the top, okay.
So, uh, that was kinda how I talked them into it, was, okay, we'll get out of your front door if, cause they don't have another AD access, so I have to pull up at the front door right now. But if I add a ramp down there, then that will eliminate that, that cluster right there.
Okay.
Um, so, I mean, that's pretty much where we're at. And we're still a year away. I mean, we won't start till next June, May or June, maybe?
Be here that quick?
I know it will be. So, I have to get MOUs with all the places, but I wanted you guys to approve, you know, putting these in, cause we're gonna have to put signs out. I'm gonna have a pole with a sign. Do I have to?
That's goo, good, okay?
And then all these places will have benches, except, you know, Walmart doesn't wanna bench, uh, because they already have one, and they only wanna use their stuff.
Sure.
And we won't put one down here. And I have to have permission to dig up that flower bed so I can put the pole in it. So I might need to call Gail. She might kill me, but yeah, I'm gonna have to do something to put a pole in that flower bed.
No problem. Post driver goes right in.
That's what I was thinking too, but I wasn't sure what was at the bottom of it. If it's concrete?
Nobody knows.
Yeah.
You're not gonna need to put it in that far.
Okay.
Uh, and I think, once this gets going, yeah, I think it's something that's needed for the community, definitely. Um, and then, again, when, when your routes aren't running, then the autonomous vehicles possibly, and I know everybody's like, well, autonomous vehicle, well, it'll have pilots in it in the beginning. It will not be a driverless car in the beginning, so.
What we have found, though, is that it cannot go on the highway by itself, that they're not ready there. So I, by May, they could get there, but as of today, the plan is to have a driver in there. Because it, they can't, you know, our strength from Walmart almost kills our autonomous, cause it's, it's just too far. So, and that's why we're heading at it.
There's other opportunities for them to shop at places where they can traverse, cross the highway, but not go down it.
And it's still, what time does jam close at?
We run until seven.
Seven. Is this gonna, you said night?
It'll run till eleven.
At night?
Mm-hmm.
So there's, there's some, I mean, extra time there, you know, the Pruitt's before, right, four nine or whatever, you know?
And the casino stays open all night, Walmart stays open till eleven, so we kinda base it on Walmart hours.
Okay.
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 All right.
Yeah, if there's any other questions, I recommend approving.
Have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Sorry, second. Have a motion as second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Upstate. Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Thanks for all your work on that. I know there's been a lot of meetings.
This has been a very long project, and now...
Unable to be at any of them.
Susan's been at, at most of the meetings with us, and so it's been helpful to get her to pull stuff real quick and get us to wind down. So hopefully we will, now we can start getting our MOUs together, all we need from the city. You know, just cause we're using the flower bed.
They stop my commute, so.
And then they've already shipped me the benches, and the signs should be in next week, cause we wanna put coming city signs.
Yes.
Okay.
Pay that driver.
Yeah.
Item number, I would... Item, item number seven, discussion and/or action to declare a vacancy in the office of councilperson for Ward Two. Do you need any definition or explanation of this?
No, we just have to declare a vacancy. Obviously, with the passing of Councilperson Turner, we have that seat empty, and the council has to recognize the vacancy at this time.
Okay, okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion as second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Move down, nothing on execu, any consent agenda, executive session. Number five, an executive session pursuant to Title 25, Section 307B1, discussing the appointment of any individual salary public officer or employee, specifically discussion regarding the appointment to fill the vacancy for city council, Ward Two. At this time, do I hear the motion to enter into executive session?
I make that motion.
Have a motion as second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, do I hear a motion to enter back into open session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion and second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number six, return from executive session, item number one, acknowledgement, acknowledgement of minutes of executive session, minutes were taken. Item number two, discussion and/or action to appoint and qualify city of Etoka resident to fill the vacancy in Ward two. At this time, I would nominate Chris McDaniels to fill the place of Mr. Turner.
I'll second.
Oh.
Okay. So we don't.
We, yeah.
Motion and second, roll call please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and/or action on appointing a qualified city of Etoka resident to replace Pat Turner as trustee of the following Etoka Municipal Authority, Etoka City Industrial Development Authority, Etoka Industrial Facilities Authority, and Etoka City Airport Authority Trust.
And we vote again on this.
At that time, at this time, I would nominate Chris McDaniels to fill that position.
I'll second.
Have a motion and second, roll call please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Congratulations, sir.
Welcome.
Welcome to the, now, if you would step forward. And we will, item four, is to administer the oath of office.
Why don't you have him get up at the, at the chair and stand up there and you give.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, just to get a picture, so, yeah.
I state your name.
I, Chris McDaniel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or valuable things.
Any money or valuable things.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties as a City Council member to the best of my ability.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties as a City Council member to the best of my ability.
He would like to raise your right hand, so I have to take it.
It's invalid, we're gonna do it all over.
Maybe I'll figure out my brakes in a little bit or so.
I hope we can not formally meet, okay, so.
What's that?
I said, we haven't formally met.
We haven't.
I know, I was singing back in the back, but.
Yeah.
So anyway, good for having me, alright.
This is Diana.
It's been a while.
Yes, by somewhere Diana.
Some days.
Alright, well, welcome. Thank you for serving this community, Chris.
Thank you.
Now, here's where you get to make your first motion. This time, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved. There you go.
Do I hear a second? Have a motion and second, roll call please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Right, as we move into our next meeting of the evening, the Etoka Municipal Authority, which call, roll please.
Ms. Pogue?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Not yet.
Oh.
No.
Not yet.
Okay. Sorry.
You're, you're not here yet.
Do I sit down?
No, you're fine.
In this meeting, no, you're good, you sit at the.
I thought we put him in all.
We, we did, we've got a vote on it in the meeting first.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Chair McCathy?
Here.
Hey, this is public comment time, if anything is not on the post agenda, you may address the board. Hearing none, we'll move down to business agenda, item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of August fourth, twenty twenty-five.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion and second, roll call please.
No.
Okay. Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the payment of purchase orders for the Etoka Municipal Authority for the month of July twenty twenty-five.
Those are on attachment number two, and I'll review all those as well today.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion and second, roll call please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item three, discussion and/or action on declaring a vacancy in trustee position formerly held by Pat Turner.
At this time, I would recommend Chris McDaniel.
Declare vacancy.
Declare vacancy.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion and second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number four, discussion and/or action on appointing a qualified city of Etoka resident to replace Pat Turner as trustee of the Etoka Municipal Authority.
Yeah. I'll make the motion that we approve Chris McDaniel for the position.
I'll second.
Have a motion and second, roll call please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
As we move down the agenda, there's no trustee, any trustee comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
That's all he's gonna get to do tonight.
You're, you're on the books.
Have a motion and a second, roll call please.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second.
I did, that's what, he beat me, so, no. So I second it. Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Alright, as we move to our next meeting of the evening, the Etoka City Industrial Development Authority, which call, roll please.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Ms. Pogue?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill? Why don't you take up this agenda out of order? And skip down to number five and six.
I can do that. I can definitely do that. Right after, public comments.
Okay.
If there's any public comment this time, if anything is not on post agenda, you may address the board at this time.
Five and six, four and five?
No, she's trying to get him down to the.
So at this time, we're gonna move down the agenda to item five, discussion and/or action on declaring a vacancy in trustee position formerly held by Pat Turner.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion and second, roll call please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr., uh, sorry, Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Johnny said five and six.
Uh, item number six, discussion and/or action on appointing a qualified city of Etoka resident to replace Pat Turner as trustee of the Etoka City Industrial Development Authority. Do I hear a motion at this time?
I make a motion to appoint.
I'll second.
Chris McDaniel to the position.
And I'll second.
Have a motion and second, roll call please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Now I can add.
Has to go to me.
Mr. Kathy?
Yeah. Yes. Now we can go back to item one. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, appreciate that.
I had forgot you, I just was making it out of bounds. I know.
This is all new, this is a new one. Discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of August fourth, twenty twenty-five.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion and second, roll call please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Now, this one, we have two number twos, but it's because it looks like that time, looks like that time.
I was sure that, I didn't catch that.
Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the Economic Development Director's report.
That is on attachment number two, if anyone has any questions.
Any questions for the, hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion and second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
And Mr. McDaniel, sorry.
Yes.
I did that backwards. You need to do yours again.
No, no, you're good.
You're good.
Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting payment of purchase orders for the Etoka City Industrial Development Authority for the month of July twenty twenty-five.
Those are on attachment number three, and we'll review today also.
I recommend appro- I recommend, do you have questions?
No.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion and second, roll call please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number four, discussion and/or action on agreement with BMT Group LLC to nullify redevelopment agreement concerning properties in Block twenty-six of the city of Etoka. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, this is an agreement on the building that we commonly refer to as the Votai Building. As you all are aware, we entered into a redevelopment agreement with BMT Group a few, maybe a year and a half ago. We sold the building to them for, I believe, forty thousand dollars, and, and they agreed to redevelopment, redevelop it. If you recall, at the time that we sold it, it was going through condemnation proceedings with the city's code enforcement review board. Those were put on hold, and they, BMT Group was allowed time to obviously redevelop it, and they have not been able to do that. We have been told for a year that they had ordered trustees to redo the roof, and they just weren't in yet, and, and unfortunately, nothing has been done on it. Meanwhile, code enforcement has been on them recently, and they actually had a hearing last week, which I had continued to next month, because I guess the BMT Group has now decided they can't redevelop the agreement, the, the building, and they are going to tear it down. They have sent over what you have in your packet, an agreement to nullify the redevelopment agreement, and notice of demolition. I, you know, we're kind of in a strange position here, because I think them not redeveloping it is probably a default of our redevelopment agreement with them. However, you know, our recourse is we can possibly get the building back, but I don't really think we want the building back, because we're not going to redevelop it, and we certainly do not want to have to assume the liability of tearing it down with it sharing that common wall with the building's next door to it, so. It, it, as much as it pains me, and it does pain me, I have dragged my feet on code enforcement with this for a while, because I don't want to see the building tore down, but as much as it pains me to do that, I think this is probably our best option, because they are.
Well, it's gonna fall down.
It's unsafe right now, so.
It is.
So, I'm, I'm recommending that we, we enter into this agreement with them.
And how long will, it, will it be before they take it down?
Our agreement with them gives them a hundred and fifty days. Or this agreement gives them a hundred and fifty days.
And then what happen? Then what happens if they don't do that in a hundred and fifty days?
Well, you know, at that point, we're gonna condemn it, and we're gonna tear it down.
And we still have to go.
We're gonna tear it down at their cost and expense, because then we're gonna, you know, file the abatement and lean on the property. I don't really wanna do that, because I don't want us to be tearing that, that's gonna be a, that's gonna be a tough demolition.
Right.
Okay, how are they gonna tear, are they tearing down the whole thing, or just their section?
No, there's only, their building that they, it, what he is saying is, on the south end of that building, where it joins the other one, that is a common wall, brick wall is probably this thick, okay?
Okay.
And there's the rafters, the floor, the roof joists adjoin in that brick wall, so it's very delicate in how you take it down, so you don't damage the adjacent property, and it's because in downtown, you have zero lot lines between the buildings, there's no gap in ownership. The property lines touch each other, that common wall sits half and half on that property line, so essentially, half the wall is the building owner to the south, and the other half is the building owner to the north. So, there on the north side, they have to remove their section of the building without damaging the other building, which leads me to a question, once that is removed, then there is a hazard along the western wall, where that sidewalk is currently located, that would have to be mitigated in order to keep somebody from accidentally stepping off that in the dark. Could be a liability that we probably need to address.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna have to cut some railings down that, probably.
Because, once that building's gone, then there's an additional hazard that's presented.
Well, but they have to, they won't say, they'll have to level that up, they'll, I mean, they'll have to bring in.
That wall, that wall is somewhere in the neighborhood of three to four feet high.
It is. Yeah, we'll have to address that, I will, I will talk with them about that, as to what they plan on.
Because they, by that building being removed, it now creates another potential life safety issue. See them soon?
Okay, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this, so we're talking.
Yes, that building.
This whole thing, or from right here?
Yes.
Seven, where the roof changes?
Yes. I believe so.
That's a lot of building.
There's two buildings to the south of that, I'm sorry, let me.
You can't see the roof.
Yes, that, see, there's another building there, and then this one?
Uh huh.
It'd be from, from this point, right here.
All the way back.
All the way to the other end. So, both of those lower sections and that taller section. It's a large building.
Oh. Okay, if we tear it down, if we tell them they gotta tear it down, how is that gonna affect our stage and all that?
No, it'd just be open behind the stage. No, it'd just be open behind the stage, a portion of the stage would be open, it won't have any effect.
I'd much rather have it down than to have it there to fall in.
If you'll recall, there was a large, there was a large brick section, that was part of the original roof line, at some point, it had been modified and put a flat roof in it, but there was a large section of brick that during the storm, just literally broke off and fell in through the roof of the, on the existing roof, that was not the greatest of shape to start with, and it knocked a gr- really large hole, and took out some roof joists.
Well, and one of the big concerns for me and for code enforcement is, along the front of this, the building, towards the right side, the roof is starting to pull that facade in, and there's some big cracks forming.
And there's some very large cracks on the southwest corner of that building as well, around an old window frame.
So there's some, you know, it's just a matter of time before it, it comes down, and I was really hoping they would be able to salvage and save the building, but they, you know, for whatever reason, I think they could have, but, um, it just didn't work out.
So, you know, just from a public safety standpoint, that's.
Do we have to talk to the owner of the other building?
No, that's not our, that'll be.
What do you know I'm talking about when we go in and do whatever we're doing?
We are not tearing it down.
I know, well, they, but they are, but I know, but what, if something happens.
They'll, that's between me.
Okay, alright.
You can see, yeah. It's falling in everywhere. And that's gonna be the tricky spot.
That's the shared.
Yeah, that's the bones.
What's in this building next to it? Anything or nothing?
I don't know for what purpose.
It's a really, really historic building, and it's sad to see it in that type of condition, and, and this is why we started this redevelopment of downtown, to try to save as many of these buildings, unfortunately, you know, there's been several factors, I'm sure that have led to some of this not happening, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, it's, it's been several years, uh, what was the date of the original development unit?
Twenty?
Oh, twenties, so.
Isn't that when we? Maybe twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one.
Now, this was, this one was in twenty twenty-three, March of twenty twenty-three is when we did this one, it's one of the last property we, we did anything with.
Oh, there was another individual before this one, that didn't wind up, that looked into it.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, alright. So, any other discussion on this matter?
Okay, and there's no other action we can take, except letting them tear it down. We're, we're forcing them basically to tear it down, we can't take it back and just say, okay, let's try something, there's no way to fix it.
I kind of alluded to that, I just don't know what we would do, you know, it's.
Well, they said that they didn't want to, didn't they? That's why I'm wondering, is it irreparable? Or?
You spent so much money in.
It's getting very close to the point that it's irreparable.
Because in, this is the building that has all the, those little things on it, is it Chevy four?
Yeah.
The Chevy building, everybody calls it.
It's a brick bowtie building. Chevy bowtie. Um, you know, that's, I mean, the challenge is, again, prior to this group looking at this property, code enforcement had been heavily on the owner, which was ACDA, to do something with the building because of its condition, and ACDA purchased all this to, to try to do redevelopment, and, you know, those were, this has been on the block for quite a while to, to address.
I guess the only thing that I would maybe say might be an option, because, I mean, I would do anything to save this building, because I just think it is a valuable building for the city, I just don't see what that is, the only other thing that might be a possibility is, you know, if this was something that Mr. Vaughn, the neighbor next door, wanted to take on, maybe we could facilitate a communication, introduce them to see if they could work something out, because I'm sure this group doesn't really wanna tear it down, because it, it is gonna be such problematic, so. But I think we need to go ahead and approve this tonight, and then maybe we can make some introductions to see if there are other options for them, but it's really not, you know, anything formal that we could do unless you're willing to pony up a big chunk of ACDA's budget to remodel this building, and then we still have to get it back from them, but I imagine the roof alone's probably gonna run three hundred, four hundred grand.
Oh, yeah.
To redo, stabilize and redo that roof.
So it's, and again, if the building is removed.
If, if it's possible.
Yeah, yeah, if it's even possible, and because at this age, what you see on these older buildings, depending on the type of mortar they use, some of the mortar starts to degrade, and just basically turns to powder, and then you start seeing issues.
We looked at it two years ago, you know, I went in with the city on inspection, and I think at that time, that people got in there and started, started working on it, I think it would have been possible, but just seeing the manner.
Because the roof was not this bad.
No, it was not, but seeing the manner in which it has deteriorated over the last two years is just, it, it's really getting very unsafe.
But again, noted if it is removed, that, that then has another liability with it of the stem wall that is against the new sidewalk.
Yeah.
So, to be addressed, so, at this time, do I hear a motion?
Well, I think, what Johnny made the motion earlier, didn't you?
Oh, I can't make the motion.
I know, but, well, that's, just repeat what you said, then, on that.
Well, I just said I would recommend at this time that we approve this agreement.
Okay, well, then, I recommend that we approve this agreement.
Second.
Have a motion as second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Johnny, thank you for working on this force. Uh, okay, as we move on down, is there any trustee comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion as second, roll call please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Moving our next meeting of the evening, the Etoka Industrial Facilities Authority, which call roll please.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Ms. Pogue?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here.
This is public comment time, if anything is not on the post agenda, you may address the board. Hearing none, we'll move down to item four on the agenda, discussion and/or action on declaring a vacancy in trustee position formerly held by Pat Turner.
I'll make a motion with declarability.
I'll second.
Have a motion as second, roll call please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number five, discussion and/or action on appointing a qualified city of Etoka resident to replace Pat Turner as trustee on the Etoka Industrial Facilities Authority.
Make a motion, we appoint.
I'll second.
Chris McDaniel.
Okay, have a motion as second, roll call please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Moving back up, the agenda, item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion as second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the sports complex manager's report.
The, both, both reports are on attachment number two, if anyone has any questions.
Looks like it's going full blast out there now.
It is.
What's OCI?
That's where I used to work, I'm on personal industries.
Is it sponsorship signs?
They make, they make the signs.
Okay.
Uh, what I, what I would add, we're just talking about a new pump there, our pump that's out in the, the city lake, uh, it went out, so we had to, uh, tap into our water line from the water plant to be able to irrigate the field until we got our new pump in, and, uh, now it's just a matter of time of getting it put back into the city lake, and now, we will have two options to keep it watered, so, in a way, this kinda helped things, because we should have always had two ways, you know.
What about the repairs?
Uh, never mind, he put the date.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Oh, you're talking about the top?
Mm-hmm. He didn't know the other day, but I didn't see that they put that in there.
And Industries, uh, trying to get everything going on football, live football.
Starting off this point second.
I make a motion, we approve the report.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion as second, roll call please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the payment of purchase orders for the Etoka Industrial Facilities Authority for the month of July twenty twenty-five.
Those are on attachment number three, and we'll review today also.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion as second, roll call please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
On the splash pad, we used to wait, we wait for Labor Day before that's closed, um, we usually.
It's been busy.
It has been busy.
Oh, yeah.
I've seen people posting videos, it's just packed with people in it.
Hot. Maybe not.
And if anything happens, we have to shut it down for Happy Day or something, it's like, oh, my God.
I know, yeah. It's definitely appreciated.
It's definitely popular.
Thought I was, thought I was losing my mind, okay, uh, is there any trustee comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that, I'll second.
Motion.
Motion as second, roll call please.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, as we enter into our last meeting of the evening, the Etoka City Airport Authority Trust, which call roll please.
Ms. McGee?
Here. I looked over there, I said your name, and I looked over there, sorry.
No checks from here.
Sorry. Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Now, I'm, I'm confused on who else name I've called.
I don't think you did, Ms. Pogue. Did she?
I did.
Did I answer for her, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm here.
Let's start over.
Okay, I'm good. Ms. McGee?